I did look up to see if I had, I don't know why I did, what happened to the email, but I don't, I know she sent it, but it's not in my trash and it's not in my inbox.
I'm gonna resend it to you. I got it real quick.
Yeah, if you got it, that'd be great.
Yeah, yeah, no problem.
Thank you.
I'm just gonna reply to everybody. That's probably not a good idea.
You want me to walk us through, Tom, while you're waiting to get it?
Yeah, go right ahead. Yeah.
So we, we will have to go to non-public at the end of this meeting. So for an issue, I did not receive anything in regards to visitors or visitor inquiries. Tom, did you get anything?
No, I didn't get anything.
Okay. The next agenda item is to approve both the public minutes for May 6th and May 19th.
Hang on, I think I had some notes on those. Just check. I think for visitors, I think we should either change Bobby's name to Bobby or Robert, one of the two.
He goes by Bobby.
So it says Bob, so we can probably just change that to Bobby. And then everything else is fine, Mr. Kelly, I think is good. And then on page two, where it says, Mr. Andruski noted that he had candidates that he hadn't interviewed yet, I would clarify that to say for the counselor position, because when I was reading it, it wasn't clear for what you were talking about yet.
Sure.
And under, on page three, 6.3 hiring freeze, and the first paragraph, first sentence, it would be prudent to freeze all hiring. That would be an addition that I would make, not just to freeze, but to freeze all hiring.
Yep.
And then under personnel, 7.1, you noted that, another clarification, that the STEM position, instead of was reduced, it should be will be reduced.
Okay.
And it says 0.5 a year ago. I don't think it was a year ago. I think that's current, correct?
For STEM?
Yeah.
It is 0.6 right now. We'll go back to 0.5.
So it was reduced to 0.5 a year ago by request of the individual, so it shouldn't be by 0.5. I think, I think a year ago needs to be struck.
Okay.
And I actually went through the roads. On page four, under instructional coach. Nope, that's fine. Nope, that's fine. I'm good. And under, on page six of the, yeah, page six. I think we made the decision to meet over the summer after, Tom, you left.
Yeah, we did. We have that on the agenda item for today, Jane.
Okay, perfect. So we don't, we don't need to add that. And that's it. That's all of my massive changes.
Perfect. Nancy, were you able to capture all of those changes that were suggested by?
Adam.
Perfect.
Anybody else have any other changes?
Nope.
That was very thorough.
Thanks. That's what I'm here for. Look at the financials real quick.
We just need to make a motion to accept those changes as amended. And if there's anything with the May 19th ones, or if there, we need a motion on those as written.
Um, I think I can make a motion to accept them as amended.
I will second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. There we go.
Awesome sauce.
May 19th as written?
As written. I have no changes to those.
Yeah, I didn't see anything.
So we'll have the same, whilst making a recommendation, this, Vanderhoof seconding, all in favor was zero.
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we have nothing for general correspondence.
Yep.
Now bring us to Molly and Michelle to talk about business and financials.
Sure. So we did send it out to you earlier today, because like I said before, it's changing every minute, but wanted you to have the most up-to-date information. So in what I sent earlier includes two things. It includes the financial you typically see every month. And on the very last page, 7 of 7, you see there's 179, $232 remaining. Now, how that fits into the unreserved fund balance, you have to take in revenue in consideration in that, as well as what was given back last year. So last year, on the very front page, we gave back 111,367. So with all revenue and expenses taken into consideration together, we're looking at an unreserved fund balance this year of 183,591. Now, keep in mind, you did vote for the three warrant articles, 10,000 each. So if the first 30,000 would go to fund those, so then after that, you have the projected unreserved minus the trust funds of 153,591.
What was that number again? I'm sorry.
153,591. And the reason I pointed out the, what we gave back the previous year is when you have big swings in what you give back each year, you have swings in the tax rate. So in order to keep things consistent, you might want to think about keeping the amount you give back consistent. So if there's certain things, sorry, my kid screams, of course, when I have to talk.
Oh, yeah, don't worry.
So I put on the bottom, maybe some ideas you might want to think about, because if you're giving back 153,000, and last year you gave back 111, if you wanted to be consistent and think about things you might need with the unknowns with COVID, things like masks or touchless thermometers. And I wasn't sure if there's any maintenance or facilities projects that you have planned for next year that you would want to use some of the year-end funds for to potentially alleviate expense to use for COVID. So I don't believe you guys have any retirements other than Mr. Foster here, but in other districts, we're doing things that we know we have to spend money on. So you know you have to spend that contractual retirement amount next year that's planned. So some districts are bringing that into free up money in next year's budget for the unknowns with COVID. If I knew what would happen with COVID, I, I would bet money or something, because, but nobody knows. So I just wanted to highlight some options for you.
Because this is about 42, little over $42,000 that we could bring forward to next year.
So you have the 153, so you could spend the whole 153, but if you want to be consistent with last year, you'd look to return about 111.
Which would leave us with 42.
Correct. Yes, yep. So I'm not saying you can only spend the 42. Some districts are spending, are giving back a little bit less than what they gave back last year, just because of the unknowns and the, the limited space they have in their budget next year. So it's really the board's decision as to how much space you want to free up for next year and balance that with how much you want to give back to the taxpayers as.
What, what is this, what is our history? Do you know, like, what do we typically give back?
I only pulled last year, so I don't have that in front of me. Michelle, do you happen to know? Oh, she's gonna go grab it, I think.
Like, what are the pros, cons? What if we say, hey, we have no idea what's expected, so we hold on to a lot more? How does that reflect on the taxpayers? Like, what happens?
Yep. So basically, whatever you give back this year is the amount you don't have to raise in taxes next year to support your budget. So we have to raise, so so if you gave back the full 183,000, that would go towards next year, and then the tax, you would not have to raise that from the taxpayers.
So it would reduce their
Correct.
tax implications.
But if we
Hey, Molly?
Then they have to pay more next year.
Correct. And you can't just hold it to hold it. You have to actually earmark it and spend it on the monies that are appropriate for this year. So you can't buy things like textbooks for next year, because it's, the intention is for next year. However, you could buy things like masks and thermometers, because you can make the argument that we need those now, and it's cheaper to buy them both now than to wait till next year. And so you just have to think of what year the intention is for, is kind of the rule of thumb, but there's certain audit, audit rules as well.
Hey, Molly, do you know what the amount of money, like, I thought it was like, if you spend 250,000, it equates to about a dollar? Or something like that on the tax rate? Do you know what that value is?
I don't have it off the top of my head, but I can do it, go back to the calculation after the meeting and send it to you tomorrow, but how you.
Oh, it's fine. I was just trying to put it in perspective of, if you, I mean, I, I think that's the ratio is roughly, I think it's 250.
So the way you do it is you take the change in the budget divided by the, the, I think it's called net valuation on your MS1, and that is the tax impact, and then times it by 1,000, that's the tax impact per 1,000. So you have to look at the total valuation of the town.
I think of a, I think a rough guess for this one would be around 75 cents per 1,000, or somewhere in that range. It's, it's not the greatest way of doing it. Your way is far more specific, but just to put it to a ballpark figure, if you gave it all back, that's what you, that's what you'd be looking at. More in that range, but not that I'm suggesting it, but just to try to give you an idea of what that means from a tax standpoint.
Yeah, I'm kind of inclined to hold a little bit more back this year, just because I think our expenses are gonna go through the roof next year. That's my general.
You can't, right, but towards Molly's point, though, we gotta, like, you can't hold on to it, you gotta spend it.
You gotta, you have to stick next year, either next year, what, like a maintenance project you knew you have to do next year. If you moved up into this year and paid for it, you could pay for it from this year's funds. I wouldn't necessarily suggest doing wants, more so just doing needs, because that way you're not spending taxpayer dollars on something that's nice to have, you're spending it on something that you need to spend.
Yeah, like, actual maintenance that we've put off, yeah.
So for example, though, we could spend it on technology, if we thought we were gonna need technology for next year in terms of individual computers or crap like that.
Yeah.
Right?
It, it, that's kind of a gray area, because the intention is for next year, so it probably should go in next year's budget, but we could make an argument that we need it now.
Well, how has been, that's a question, I know, David, that might be one for you. How is the status and the, not the status, the health of the computers that are currently at home?
Well, I, staff is, is pretty strong. I just purchased with some week money units for, for all the teachers, and Chris and I are gonna be redoing the title for grant restructuring to allow us to spend about some money on some new technology for teachers. Four more units would be, be needed, so that's gonna happen, I believe. But in terms of student one-to-one, because we're gonna be down one classroom, we're pretty, pretty good shape. I, I bet we, you know, have iPads or Chromebooks for every kid in the school.
How many are out at students, out with students right now?
Surprisingly few than you would think. You know, I know that there are very few KDA2. I know Jody Bennett and I had a conversation on March 13th, when we were going out, and she and I quickly made the decision to just send one home with each kid. And then in the early parts of March is being out, I farmed out a number of computers, but not that many, fourth and fifth grade. Most kids have their own computers at home. And, you know, I knew and reached out to kids I knew that might need a unit, and, you know, some, some broke. And, and so that was my job to kind of go and repair. So, so to answer your question, we, we have some great one-to-one computing between Chromebooks and iPads. If there are weaknesses, it would be in the primary grades for having a newer version of iPads.
Do we have a list of what projects we said we weren't gonna do next year?
Do.
I have two questions. The first one, we're talking about next year. Are we talking about next school year or next, like, as of 2021?
So your budget is for your fiscal year, and your fiscal year starts July 1st. It goes July 1st to June. So all your summer expenses fall in next year's budget. However, if it, if it's something that, like a maintenance project, you can't do when the children are in the building, you can do it in the summer and accrue it back to the year.
Okay.
I think the only way to spend that money, though, is on those projects, which we said last time we weren't gonna do probably anyways. We wanted to wait on all that stuff. I didn't know if there was one specific project that would make sense to do.
Or you could think about masks and the touchless thermometers. I, I know Brent did a touchless thermometer. Michelle, do you know how much that was? I don't, I know, I don't know how much it was, though.
Touchless thermometers are not that expensive, but you're gonna need probably more than one. I don't think they're more than a couple hundred dollars.
Yeah. Well, we can definitely stock up on the COVID stuff that we're gonna need. I mean, I think that, that makes sense. I was just thinking, like, we were requested a full-time counselor, right? But
I don't know if that's.
Didn't know where to put that money. So I guess that that would technically be next year anyway.
Right.
That probably wouldn't work. That's why I was asking about the year, because like, well, there's, you know, there's a way we could do it. Um.
And again, you don't have to spend it. You can give more back than you did last year, which then it, it's always, it's, everyone always says return to taxpayers, but you're not really returning it to the taxpayers. You're just, it's the amount you, less you have to raise from the taxpayers.
Right.
Yeah. Is, do we have, Chris, a a bulk supply or a bulk purchase agreement with any, anyone for different masks and COVID-type supplies, things along those lines?
We do not.
Okay. So where would we be purchasing these from? We're looking at like, Amazon, which doesn't have anything?
Or, you know, you know, H, WB Mason, who we have done, we've done a lot of work with. Basically, we'd be vetting it out through Mr. Lister, who he's been able to get some supplies through and who he has a connection with. That's where we'd start. And then, you know, put an order in there. The computers that Dr. Mr. Foster talked about, that is gonna be a bulk order through SAU 16. So even though, you know, David has said that we're looking good, there is a bulk order that's going out for all of, all of the schools, if they wanted to get in there to bring that, that price cost down.
Yeah, okay.
And what, oh, sorry, go ahead.
No, no, go ahead, go ahead. Sorry.
I was thinking about the insulation issue, right, that we had, and that was one of the projects we had put on hold. Do we know on what our ventilation in that building is? Like, is something we should be thinking of a central air unit? To make sure that, you know, there's a, what is it, HEPA filter in this, in the school to, to cut down on the virus spreading in the building? Or like, are there things like that that we should be thinking about?
And we haven't gotten any guidance on an upgraded air filtration system. What you have, you know, has to be tested and has certain parameters that that has to meet every year, and those always pass in our inspections through your, your air filtering. It actually got better when you put the new boiler in, the better circulation and things of that. So that does help. But you also have a building that's pieced together in different points, so it's not like an efficient brand-new building, where the ventilation is gonna be a little bit different, so.
And do we know of any of those parameters that are gonna have, like, suggestions for, hey, schools should have these equipment inside their buildings for sterilizations or things like that? Or do we know of?
We've gotten nothing on that. And I doubt you would get anything either from the governor or the CDC in regards to this is the product you need at this time.
And when do we have to decide if we're gonna spend this money or return it?
You have to make a motion to, so the, it would have to be what you wanna, you know, how much you want to release out of there. And then, you know, we could put together different packages, but you have till June 30th to spend that money.
My initial reaction was to come up, you know, spend some of it, but I gotta tell you, the more I think about it, we made plans last school board meeting to specifically make sure we had money set aside to deal with things. So I feel like we've handled that part of it, and that it almost makes the most sense to just give it all back. The taxpayers will, I mean, they're gonna benefit in some way, shape, or form. I think that'll help us when we go to do negotiations again. I, I, I agree with Molly, though. I mean, it is good to keep it, because otherwise you send the message, like, what are you doing? All of a sudden, all this money back.
Yeah. And it'll be great next year, because it will lower the tax rate next year. But the following years, like, two years from now, when you go back to kind of the business as usual, it's, it's gonna kind of jump back up to a normal rate. And so you just need to make sure you keep that in mind, explain it.
Yeah. No, and I totally agree with you. I just don't want to spend it, like, part of, well, if we don't know what we're gonna spend it on, I just don't want to spend it for the sake of spending it down, if we're not really sure what it is we even need.
Sure. No, I totally agree.
Yeah, that almost seems like wrong.
One, one thought that I had is there's two things on that, that facilities list. I know we put them off, but I don't think we knew that we'd have this much money in unreserved fund balance. I'm just looking at the new, the old doors that, that are in that, that older part of the building, and the insulation, and between those two projects, that's like $14,000. I think, you know, with no one there, we, if you gave us the clearance to get that done, that's gonna, it's gonna, even if we don't have kids there, it's gonna reduce your heating costs.
Right. And we get that done between, at the, by the end of the month, though?
Yeah. Well, you just have to, we just have to get our quote to be able to pay that, and then we can pay it. We don't have to pay out by June 30th, as long as we have the work agreement ready. By June 30th, we can do it, and they could start it in July, James, who will find there. So I don't know if that makes sense to say the board would make a motion to give up to $15,000 for those two projects. And then you're reducing it by 15,000, because if you give back 150, and then next year we only give back 130, then it's gonna increase the tax rate, you know, so you gotta, that's why I'm gonna stay similar each year, maybe giving back a little bit less or more. That, that helps out your taxpayers, too. So just a thought that I throw out there.
No, I, I would support that, Chris. If there were, if, if you would ask me, I would do, the fire alarm is too much, and I think that's probably the, the biggest safety concern, is it would, would be that fire alarm, but it's 30 or 40 grand. And those doors are really ratty, and the insulation is only 6,500 bucks. Why wouldn't you do that? I don't know, but that, that would be, I think, the best solution, if you were gonna do any maintenance work.
And that would put us right around, what, 138 given back, which isn't that, that far off. Yeah, I would have no, no problem with that. Wait, Jane?
I would, I, yeah, I don't have a problem with that. I might also throw in there, you know, getting a couple of those thermometers. It's not gonna be much more. And, and we can, those are gonna be probably the most expensive single purchase items.
How much do the thermometer go for?
Let me take a look.
Brentwood was like around $300. I want to say the.
Oh, that's it?
Yeah, they're.
111, I take, so.
Yeah. If we get like a couple of, let's get like two or three of them, and then we know that we have, you know, one in reserve and two that are probably gonna be active.
Yeah, that would make, I, that's, that's fine. I don't have an issue with that. Carl, how?
Oh, I saw Michelle, I didn't know if she was flagging, if she had something to say.
I just found out the, what you guys gave back for the last five years. So I'll just put it in even thousands, rather than going to all the small change. But this last year, about 111, the year before, 66, the year before that, 18, the year before that, 128, and the year before that, 113.
Wow, we have not been consistent.
No.
No, but part of that was due to issues. I know why one was only 16. We had a, we had a huge payout at the end.
So my thought is, just so long as the insulation wouldn't reduce ventilation, because like, that's one of my main thoughts, and I know older buildings actually sometimes are better ventilated, because the air gets sucked out through the cold.
There's no air handling in that section of the building.
Okay, well, that's good to know. Then I guess the only other thing I would compare is what makes more sense to get us to that even number. If the, if the fire alarm is a major safety hazard, but it's 40,000, and we have like, a big surplus this year, maybe it makes sense to do it this year. And otherwise, I'm on board for fixing the doors and the insulation.
Yeah. So let's fix the doors insulation, get some heads started on.
We might have a hard time selling things to the town if the town is, is in recovery for a couple of years. If we have this money now, we can do the fire alarm now. And it might be smart to take care of it when we have the funds and then give the, I guess, knowing that people might have a hard recovery from this COVID thing.
Yeah.
David, is the fire alarm a huge issue?
Um, it, it's functional, but they, they, they are recommending, Simplex is recommending that it be replaced. It's pretty, pretty antiquated.
We had on our facilities plan to do that in 2023, and that was cleared by the fire chief. We had talked to him about our, our projects. We shared our facilities plan. He said that was fine. That, again, it should be updated sooner than better, but he was okay with that timeline.
Yeah, I would say we might need till 2023 to recover from this, so I, that's a big expense.
Yeah.
As much as I'd like to do it, I don't know if it's, if it's not critical.
Well, I mean, if Jeff, you're talking Jeff Buxton, right? So if Jeff said it could wait to 2023, then very, very meticulous when it comes to fire safety. So I mean, he would recommend putting it off for two years if he, if it needed to be done.
That's, that's accurate.
Yeah, that's, that's just not how he flies.
That's really good to hear.
Yeah, and if, and if, actually, we might be able to do something if things don't work out as bad as we think this next year, we might have some money to put towards it, so.
And that was the only.
I'm cool with the installation.
Yeah, that, that was the only thing on the plan for next year, right, was the insulation in those doors, anyway?
They weren't, they were years out, but I looked through it, because we had the keyless fobs and cameras, which I don't think we need to put in right now, and that's like, close to $40,000. So I pulled the year up. We did talk about insulation for the summer. I just moved it up a year for the front doors, because we looked at doing that 2022, but those are, I mean, you, you, you could rip those open. I would highly recommend those.
Yeah, and then we'll save money.
The only other thought there is cameras are hugely helpful right now in our society, knowing who's playing on playgrounds if they get sick. We can track them, right? Like, who they're with. I don't know, that's just another thought.
I would hold off on the only, yeah, I totally hear what you're saying. The only reason I would hold off on the cameras is the simple fact that we don't even know we're going back in September.
Right.
So until we have some idea of what even recess looks like, I know, and depending on certain things, there will be nobody outdoors, or who the heck knows what they're gonna do. I'd like to see how that plays out, then that kind of large sum at that point, you know what I mean? Once we had a better handle on what this is gonna look like. I'll make a motion to set aside the 15,000 to take care of the insulation in the doors.
And put in some thermometers, get some thermometers.
Put in, and, and three thermometers. Do I, more than 15,000, Chris? Put in 16, call it a day?
Yeah, I mean, I, I was just thinking, if you gave us up to 18, that still gives back to the, the town 135,000.
Okay, then let's set aside 18, keep it simple. And we'll do that for the thermometers, the doors, and the insulation. That would be my motion.
Yeah.
I'm good with that.
Okay. Which one of you guys are seconding it?
I will.
Thank you. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Molly, thank you, dear.
That's it. Sorry, he just woke up from a nap.
Oh, it's fine.
Oh, that's fine. My kids have been in and out all the whole entire time. I've been writing like notes, and unfortunately, I lost a piece of paper to notes. So cute, though.
Hey, do we have anything on, oh, we got board members questionnaire from Lotzek? And Sanderson?
Yep. So that's just actually for next year. So we actually got that really late this past year, so you probably remember just completing it a few months ago. But that's for, to complete sometime this summer that I just wanted you guys to have.
Okay, no problem. Under personnel, Chris, guidance counselor hiring.
Yeah, so we just wanna, we're really excited. We were able to hire Tracy Elward as our guidance counselor. Tracy did her internship under Ms. Escolent.
Oh, nice.
So she knows the school, knows the kids, couldn't have had a better mentor. She was the unanimous choice by the committee that had hired her, so she will be the counselor at Newfields next year at 0.6. So she's very excited, and I think, you know, she, she is in a mold of. she she is in a mold of Kelsey Escolin, which is so hard to find, so I think we we struck, we got lucky with with that hire. I'm really excited for Tracy, so just wanted to share that with you.
That's wonderful. I'm super excited about that. That's great. And the kids are familiar with her, if I remember correctly?
They are, absolutely.
Great.
Hey, David, you're up. Remote instruction update.
Okay, well, I'm just, you know, just a Newfields Elementary School update. The projected enrollment for next year is up to 109 now, which is really, really good. I'm really happy. Got some move-ins and seems like it's going in a positive direction. The remote learning has been going along very well. I'm super proud of the staff, you know, you know, being a PE teacher and doing remote learning, probably not one of your easier things to do. But these folks have really hung in. They've attended the classroom Zoom sessions and they've really worked very hard to be a part of the staff and and to be consistent for the kids. So I'm I'm very pleased with their work. Special Education Department has done very well, as well as all the classroom teachers in in just sustaining what I think is pretty challenging work with kids that are beginning to waffle a little bit this last week, you know, or even maybe third week in May. The work that we've done this last week has been sort of an attempt to take the foot off the accelerator a little bit and do some different things. We've asked kids to build ferry houses. We'll be putting on a video, a lot of video this week of those ferry houses. We had 50 kids participate, which is a great response. And we also have our showcase of talent, which looks at learning kids did over the course of their COVID remote learning. And we'll be airing that tomorrow. We recently released the fifth grade celebration of learning that Jenny Bishop has been really super helpful. She is going to be handing out when kids come to pick up their materials next week. There's a memory book that they put together. Really, everyone knows how talented Jenny Bishop is and I I bet it's going to be really awesome. But she also did the celebration of learning video for the fifth grade, which is traditionally something they do at the end of the year. It's been on my Facebook and and Jane, you got a copy in your email today, so it it's really beautifully done. We also, for the fifth graders, each kid is going to get a bucket like this tomorrow morning at beginning at nine o'clock. It's got a Connor's Beverage Root Beer, Newfields Country Store Cookie. We've got a personal note for Mr. Foster, thanking them for hanging in and doing a great job with their learning. We got a certificate for each kid that they will get at the end of the school year. But it's not everything, so we are hoping to have a celebration at some point when we can all return and and do that safely. But tomorrow's caravan will be going to every kid's doorway, driveway socially distanced. The grade five team consists of myself, Sir Rosenbleeth, Ally Bistavka. Not sure if Ms. Escolin's going to make it or not. She seemed to have a meeting and a conflict, but and Mrs. Smith, Kyle Smith, who has also been working with kids. So we're going to visit every door yard and and just connect with the kids a little bit, and I hope that that goes well. The remote learning narratives have been teachers have been working very hard on those to report out on what the kids have done and been doing in in their their sessions with teachers. Those will go out on the ninth. I've met with every staff member to review their end of year goals and it was real interesting to see what the shift in PD and what they're looking at for next year and what their needs are after having the shift to remote learning. And finally, the last culminating event of the year will be the parade at one o'clock. I very carefully worked with Nate Lebanon, the chief of police in Newfields, to be the person to kind of design the route and to lead us in that so that we did it properly, carefully and safely. And that's going to go off at one o'clock, and I think we're probably going to have 25 cars for that, and we'll just be going off through Newfields. Again, socially distanced and safely in in the process of that. Summer school is all staffed. The schedule's moving forward. Jody Bennett, who's here tonight, is one of the staff members who will be doing a lot of the remote learning for for the summer school. We have June 23rd through July 16th. And we also have a lot of students who are receiving intervention involved in the extended school year program as well. So I'm really happy that we'll have that. Mrs. Toby, who worked in the kindergarten program, will be doing some work with some of our younger kindergarten and first and second graders as well. The dropping off and picking up of student materials, coats, hats, boots, whatever, that's scheduled for next week. And like I said, the kids in fifth grade will get their memory books as well. I have had several conversations with Susie Griffith. And those continue. The effort to be, there be a a great transition between my administration and hers. I want her to be up to speed and very successful in what she does for Newfields. And I I think that's going to happen, hopefully. So this being my last meeting, I just wanted to thank you for the opportunity to work in Newfields. It's a, it's a very special place. I think I've made many, I know I made many positive contributions, and I would like to think that I am leaving it better than I found it. And so with that, I I thank you so much for the opportunity and good luck in the future. I I I care very much about Newfields and, like I said, it's it's a pretty special place. Thank you.
No, thank you, David. You're you're not exaggerating when you say that you've definitely taken a tough situation when you first came on and turned it into such a much better one that, you know, we can't thank you enough for allowing us to get out of that rough spot and into a place that's far more positive. You know, so thank you.
Thank you.
Dave, was it you or what's social sentinel that I missed?
Question last year from Ms. Walsh. We we came about from our our safety committee, some safety task force, the SAU 16, and and Jane asked if we had any data on Newfield students. So I just wanted to give a quick update on that. And Jane, I'm glad, I'm proud to report that there were not any Newfield students that were identified through, you know, needing those those direct intervention calls, either at the elementary school or through, you know, the discipline of of at CMS or or EHS. So I did work with Mr. Kane and Ms. Asbell, and, you know, the numbers are unprecedented, you know, they it it searched 140 email, 140,000 emails, 382 chat rooms, 208,000 documents and 16,000 different images. So it's just making sure our kids are safe and that, you know, they're they're not having trouble. And I'm glad to report that none of the the students that that did show some difficulties were represented in Newfields.
Oh, that's really good to hear. Thank you.
Welcome.
I'm assuming there's nothing on the building and grounds?
There is not.
Okay, pupil pupil related matters is a no. Policy committee?
The only thing that we went through on policy was the updates that we're going to go back to the SAU board, so there shouldn't be anything for us to go through now.
All right, cool. No old, I'm assuming, future meeting dates?
Yeah, I sent to you a document today, just if, I know we talked about having a meeting in in July and August, just kind of talk about where we're at and an update on remote learning. Some of the plans are going to come forward that we'll present to the whole joint board, so.
I don't have any emails from you.
You don't have it? Okay, let me share it right now.
Thank you.
I don't include me, I got it.
Yeah, you're in it, Tom. It should have been a shared Google Doc, Jane.
Nope. I have not gotten anything from you. Make sure to share it to my Comcast, not to the SAU.
Ah, yes, same here.
I don't know if that makes a difference for the SAU sharing.
I I did share it to your SAU, so that was why.
Ha ha, there you go.
Make sure you share it to the
So just in those meeting dates, I just took our calendar from this year and looked at the dates for next year, kept our dates. But I don't have dates for July and August. Obviously, we want to get those today, but just looking at staying consistent with last year, meeting at Wednesday. And looking at, I think we started before at 6:30, didn't know if six o'clock was a better meeting time. And again, this is if we're meeting in person. If we're meeting virtual, I think we can come back and say, is there a time that we can meet earlier? So it's just for something you do look at. It doesn't need to be finalized, but I do want to, you know, start looking at, you know, in our July or August, when we might know more. Does this this schedule make sense? But I wanted to at least lock in dates in in all of those different months, since I do have two other boards, so that I don't have any conflicts and we can kind of schedule it out. So it's for you to look.
How sure, um, how is, do you usually want to do like 6:30, right? You're still working.
Yeah, like, absolutely. And even in the summer, this like, I had to leave a meeting today to get here, so because my workday runs usually until six, so it's pretty hard. These 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 COVID school board meetings have been pretty tough on me personally.
Yeah, I would say I, granted, I'm sitting at my desk until five, but it's a nice take like a half hour to decompress and, you know, get some stuff done before we start up. So I have no problem pushing it out a little bit.
Yeah, 6:30 pretty much, no matter what, is a good time for me.
Works for me, whatever. That's fine. Absolutely not a problem.
Okay, so 6:30 it is. We'll keep it at 6:30.
Chris, I don't know if you can like echo that back for the district meetings too, like it's really hard to get to five o'clock meetings.
I would suggest you get that back. I don't run those meetings, so and where it's 33 of you. You know, that was one of the reasons that we had talked about having the four chairs represent because it would be a lot easier to get, you know, eight people rather than 33. I could definitely share it with Dr. Ryan, but I I don't run those meetings. I just neither does Molly or Michelle, so we can give it to them, but we just, we attend as you all do too. But I could share it with them. I just, it might be better coming from boards or.
Yeah, Carl, if you reach out to Travis.
Yeah.
You're, I'm sure you're not the only one, so, but I would, and Travis is running the show, so if you let him know, and nothing else, he'll bring it up at the next meeting and we can
I'll bring that up too, just to put another voice on there.
Different people, I think that's great. And that's what his job is, is to negotiate that stuff, so.
Awesome. Good suggestions.
Yeah. Okay, so in terms of, Chris, Dr. Ryan thought he might have something for us in July, right?
Yeah, we were thinking, well, I think you're going to have to set another joint board date for July. And we were thinking mid-July that our reports would be done or our report from the subcommittees would be collated and ready to present mid-July for you, Tom.
Okay, so I guess my question is, is there any real reason to meet before that? Like normally, we meet the second week, let's say, the first week. Is there any real, really thing to talk about in July if we don't really have any direction? You know what I'm saying?
So we need to wait for that report to come out?
Well, I mean, we'd be better to meet after that instead of last week in July, and then we can meet in the second week in August or something. I mean, that to me would make more sense than
Yeah.
meeting before the meeting to discuss nothing because we don't know what's going on.
Right, yeah.
I'm okay with that. I mean, even if we're meeting like the week of the 20th or the 27th, I mean, we're probably going to end up having even more changes in mid-August, so, I mean.
Right.
I I
That makes sense in your part, do you think?
Yep, absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, so if we did something, I I would ask that probably if we did something, but either way, it doesn't matter.
What's the third week in?
The third full week in July is this, like the week, the 12th, which if I'm looking at a Thursday, it'd be the 16th, but we have the fourth in there, so we might want to push it to maybe the 23rd. If we're looking at Thursdays.
Yeah, I think the 23rd would probably be smart. I'm sure we'll have something by the SAU then, that we can know how that's going to affect us. Your schedule open on the 23rd?
Yep.
Let me look at my work schedule real quick.
Yep.
And this is July 23rd, not August 23rd, right?
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, I'm fine that far out.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
Do you two want to go for 6:30? That help with that? Because
Please.
You're still going to have issues, so, all right, we do 6:30 on July 23rd, and then I would throw out the next one, maybe the 13th of August. That'd be the second week.
Yeah.
Three weeks after that meeting, by then, then that gives us plenty of time before school starts up.
And that's actually the same schedule. That's the second, the second Thursday.
The second, yep. So we'll just mess it up for the July one.
July.
That sounds good to me.
On that date too.
Okay.
Just double check my calendar. Yeah, that one's good. Well, for some strange reason, I'm not traveling.
Yeah, I know. That's what I was like, I don't really need to check. I don't have any events in there.
Yeah, the only thing I'm looking at in August is like anything, any of, any other evening things that I have going on that I need to worry about, and I, right now, we're good.
All right, cool. So that will work. All righty, I think that takes care of that. For the non-public, I believe. Yeah, Chris, did you have any questions from the public at all?
No questions from the public.
Did we post this on the Facebook page and stuff? I know we talked about that last time.
I did not post it on Facebook page. I I don't have access to it.
David was potentially was going to see what we can do to get that on there.
I dropped the ball. I didn't put that on there.
Okay, so we'll have to figure out how to I'm assuming that's going to go over to Susie next month?
Susie will be starting to join us on in July, correct?
So she'll, okay, we'll see what we can do to get her to.
I could put those two dates on there.
That would be great.
Okay.
Yeah, that would be lovely. Thank you.
Okay, so I think with that being said, we got to probably go to non-public here.
Yeah, just before we do that, I just want to say goodbye, Mr. Foster. Thank you for everything. You've been a partner for the last two years and I really appreciate it. It's been a great elementary school to walk into every every time I walk in, being greeted by you and Ms. Johnson and through every teacher and kid there. So thank you for making me feel at home and and all of those kids. You've done a fabulous job and I I want to stay interested in what you're doing because I'm sure you'll be fishing all over the world and and doing some great things. So you've you've made us proud. I appreciate all the work you've done. Thank you for, you know, being organized at every meeting and really keeping that the ship in the right direction. So thank you and best to you and your family. I know you got a wedding coming up this summer, so congratulations on that as well.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you, David. Really appreciate it, man.
Absolutely. Good luck with everything. Keep us in, keep keep us informed as to what you're doing. We love to hear it.
Well, I hope that they'll let me into the province. I'm supposed to brook trout fish in Labrador in July, but I don't know if we're going to get into the country. That's so I may, it may be 2021.
Yeah, it might be.
Are you kicking me out for this?
Yeah, there's no
Non-public?
Yeah. Yeah, you can, you are free to go.
All right, so long farewell. Thank you, Chris.
Bye.
Take care, man.
So just need a motion at 5:52?
I'll make a motion to go into nonprofit, I mean, nonprofit.
I'll second the nonprofit and then
I'll
There we go. Thanks, bye, Nancy.
Thanks, Nancy.